Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education meeting, regular public meeting on Wednesday, May 22nd. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the resounding justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel. Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Monday, January 29th, 2024, and Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly elected board members. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a full audience on this warm day. We have a couple of presentations tonight, so I just wanted to welcome everyone here. It's an exciting night for a lot of you sitting in the room. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Chirica, and we will have our first presentation.
Very good. Welcome, everybody. It's great, again, as Ms. Toth said, to see everyone here this evening for our celebrations. Our first recognition is presented by Hank Bitten, who is the Executive Director of the New Jersey Council for Social Studies at Rutgers University, who will be presenting a student recognition award to Sia Dixit, a sixth grader at Linwood School. So, Mr. Bitten, if you could come up to our microphone. And Sia, come on up.
Thank you for having me. Does the microphone pick up?
Yes. If you bang, I think it's on, and you're probably better to pick it up so it'll pick up your voice. If you just hit the talk to make sure it's on. Green light, you're good to go.
And welcome, Sia. And I'd like your teacher, Ms. Tracy, also please come forward. As you heard, the New Jersey Council for Social Studies is a group of about fifteen hundred and fifty K-12 teachers and about twenty-five college, you know, professors who are at the Livingston campus at Rutgers. And we do professional development for teachers, we're involved with curriculum consulting work, we do all kinds of curriculum resources, and we also recognize high school, college, and middle school students. And from your district this year, Sia Dixit is the one receiving an award. Let me tell you a little bit about Sia. First of all, she was the only sixth grader nominated, and she won. Seventh and eighth graders are nominated. My own grandson and granddaughter are middle school students, but they weren't nominated. I wish I could just present this to them as well. Sia is involved, well, every student, let's put it this way, every student gets good grades, every student is motivated, every student is polite, just about every student has done some research project, and that's how they're recognized. Sia, there was a committee of ten of us, and we looked at all the information that was submitted by Ms. Tracy. And Sia, okay, is involved with a program that you might be familiar with called Rising Tomorrow. And she has been involved with helping people in your community with food needs, with diapers, with toys, with young parents. And I can tell you this, okay, that at Rutgers University, we have this card, and most of us don't think that college students are food insecure. But when you think about it, even in my community, okay, everybody works, but if you're paid hourly or you have a single income, and you have a teenager or a preteen that eats a lot of snacks, you find you run out of money. And there are so many students, probably in this community, certainly in mine, all throughout the state, suburban, urban, that really, they, especially on the weekends, maybe have one or two meals, but not three meals a day. And that's, Sia, that was the, one of the final reasons, okay, of why they selected, the committee selected you. And I also want to say to the board, the number-one mark of success of a student, this is from Stanford History Education Group and other groups, is when a student is involved with civic engagement. When they recognize a need in the local community and do something about it and alert others, that is the mark of success. We spend a lot of time on content and questions and tests, but the true mark of leadership and success, Sia, is what you are doing. And I want to encourage you to expand your network, okay, to others in your school, your friends, because what you're doing is very important. I can assure you that the members here on your Board of Education were probably touched by some teacher, because they're all volunteers, they don't get paid for this, and they probably were involved in high school or middle school or maybe was in college, of the importance of helping someone else. And finally, I would just like to commend you for your curriculum. I do use it as a model. Your middle school curriculum particularly has excellent compelling questions. You blend in financial literacy into your eighth grade world history curriculum, and you're one of the few schools in the state still teaching about Holocaust and genocide and encouraging students to understand the diversity of our world and the community. So, Sia, she's already seen this, not surprised, okay? First-place middle school student for Central New Jersey. I want to say thank you and congratulations.
Sia, would you like to say something? Sia, would you like to say something?
Do you want to?
Grab the microphone, and then we'll take a picture.
Thank you very much for giving me this award, and thank you, Ms. Tracy, for your guidance in nominating me. I wouldn't have gotten this award without you, so thank you very much. Thank you to my parents and family who helped me get it.
Thank you. Mr. Bitten, stay up here so we can get a picture.
I just have a couple things I'd like to say. Bright and hardworking and above all kind, Sia, you have made a positive impact in our community. Through a partnership with St. Peter's University, excuse me, St. Peter's Healthcare System, you have founded a nonprofit organization, Rising Tomorrow. Indeed, you have risen the tomorrows of many. I'm so proud of everything you've done to help the common good, and your volunteerism is to be commended. Congratulations. I'm going to miss you next year. I wish you all the best, and I know you have many good things to come. Mr. Mrs. Dixit, would you like to join us?
And Mr. Bitten, come on up for the picture. Thank you so much, Mr. Bitten. And again, congratulations, Sia. That's, it's a wonderful accomplishment, and we really encourage our students to be civically engaged and to volunteer, but you've really taken it to the next level. So you're a great role model for our students. Thank you. Now, I know this is the event you've all been waiting for all month. This is Mrs. Keita's chance to share with us and our principals, our wonderful retirees, and share their backgrounds and everything to honor them for all their years of service here in North Brunswick. So I'm getting the slideshow ready, and you tell me when to change the slides. Am I the last one? I feel all the way back, sorry. Okay.
Thank you. Welcome to our annual retiree recognition. Again, congratulations to all of our retirees, most of which came back for our meeting tonight, so we're super excited that you are here. I must say, I know most of you personally, since I've worked in the district for twenty-three years. It's great to see my former honors English teacher here tonight, Mr. Stern. So happy to see you after, or something. I went to high school here myself. But again, congratulations to all of you. We're so happy for you, so excited for you, very jealous as well. But let's kick this off. One of the things that we like to do, I don't even need our business administrator, our accountant, for this, we calculated it ourselves, total years of district service of this year's retirees, four hundred thirty-seven years and eight months. That is. And again, you know, as someone who grew up in North Brunswick, someone who graduated here, someone who has worked here my whole career, I cannot tell you how impressed I've been over the years to know you, to work with you, and again, celebrate your accomplishments of being in our district and for your many years of service and your dedication, not only to our students but to our staff and our community. So again, thank you. And we will kick it off with John Adams. I'd like to invite our Tima, as well as Anna, Linda, and Susan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anne Kingsley, the principal at John Adams, and this is Carly Cummings, the instructional dean at John Adams. I'm sorry, my back's a chupacabra, by the way. We, I didn't know that Mrs. Keita was going to tell you how many years all of the retirees, so I had something like that in my thing, too. We have three educators in John Adams who are retiring this year, and although I am very old, all of them have worked in the district longer than I have, okay? These ladies have a combined total of ninety-nine years of service in middle and upper school this year. Why don't you just work another year, like it's been a year? So let me just tell you a little bit about them. I'm going to begin with Linda Ludwig over there at the end with the beautiful white pants on. Linda Ludwig has worked at John Adams for twenty-five and a half years. She began her John Adams career in kindergarten and shortly after moved to first grade. She gave birth to her first beautiful daughter, Lauren, and went on maternity leave. I didn't really get to know Linda until after that. I, it was a few years later, and I was a special ed inclusion teacher, and I got to work in Linda's fourth grade classroom. Now, when you are a teacher, you don't really get to know the practice of the teachers. You speak to them in the faculty room, you see them when making copies, but you don't get to see them in action. However, I got to see Linda in action, and working in her classroom showed me what a good girl, a kind, fun, and organized teacher she was. And Santa said that I only got to spend one year with her, they moved me to another classroom, but also something wonderful happened to her at that time, she had her second beautiful daughter, Lindsay, right? So when she returned from maternity leave, Linda worked in second grade, and then she worked in third grade, so if you have been following along, Linda has taught kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade. Yes, she is that amazing, which why, is why it makes me sad to say that she is retiring. We hope that you have lots of time spending relaxing with your daughters. I know you're not going to be relaxing, and I know they're not going to be relaxing, but that's my hope for you, and also with your husband, Kyle, you will be greatly missed, Linda. So Anna Dumestrich, you thought twenty-five and a half years was a lot, right? Anna Dumestrich worked in John Adams for close to thirty-six years. When she first started working at her school, she taught third grade for nine years. She also worked four years in first grade, but she spent the majority of her time, which is what she's doing now, will do for the next few weeks, is teaching our adorable little kindergarteners. I think it was a difficult decision for Anna to retire because she loved being a teacher so much. However, she does have many good things to look forward to. She can take better care of Riley, that's her dog, right? She can spend time with her dad and her siblings, two of them are retired also. She can, of course, spend time with her husband, Tom, and her son, Matt, but perhaps what she is currently most looking forward to is planning her daughter Amanda's wedding, who will be getting married next year. So we will miss Anna very, very much, but we are so happy that you have so much to enjoy in your retirement. Congratulations, Tima. Our last retiree is Susan Stern, and I'm going to begin talking about Susan, not, Susan knows this story, but it's not about her work at John Adams. I will explain to you. She is the director of John Adams right now, but I would like to describe the first time, I'm going to try to make air quotes, that I met her, because I didn't really meet her this time. I saw her, but it was the first time I knew who she was. I was a teacher at John Adams at the time, and Susan didn't work at John Adams at the time, she worked at Parsons. She was at the luncheon for the Teacher of the Year, and she was giving that award to the teacher from Parsons. Now, apparently, the woman who was receiving that honor was a big Miss America fan, and Susan knew that. So she contacted the Miss America pageant and got tickets for the Teacher of the Year recipient to see the pageant. I was really just so impressed by her thoughtfulness that I emailed, I didn't know it, but I emailed her the next day to tell her what a lovely gesture I thought that was, and I still do think it was a lovely gesture. Susan spent the majority of her time in her graduate career at Parsons School, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. She began there as a fifth-grade teacher. She worked at Parsons when her three children, Emily, Frankie, and Michael, were born. She also worked at Parsons when she received her master's degree in administration. Susan moved on from being a fifth-grade teacher, and then she took over the position of the gifted and talented teacher. She did that for a couple of years, and then she used that master's degree that she got and became the director, which is kind of like an assistant principal, at Parsons School. She had many roles in that position, such as helping struggling students, welcoming new families into school, and increasing parent involvement in Parsons. Eleven years ago, Susan transferred to John Adams and became our director of elementary instruction. She has worked hard doing many things in John Adams, such as planning bus evacuation drills, those are always fun, making a master schedule, observing teachers, and holding meetings to get services for students who need extra help. In March, Susan told me that she had decided to retire after thirty-eight years in North Brunswick. That's pretty impressive, thirty-eight years. If I had anybody else to talk to, I'd be up to like about fifty years, but Susan's the last person, right? That is, thirty-eight years, that is really impressive. We would like to wish her good luck in this next chapter of her life, where she plans to move to Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and spend time with her husband, Walt, and her handsome grandson. Congratulations.
I'm never one to shy away from a microphone. I just want to thank the board and everybody in North Brunswick for allowing me to serve the children for the past thirty-eight years. I like to tell people, I grew up at Parsons, but I grew old at John Adams. So I had my children at Parsons and became a grandmother here at John Adams, and looking forward to, as Ann said, spending time with my family and my little grandson, but I'll have a lot of memories, so thank you very much.
For Judd, we have our principal, Dr. Veronica Glover, and we have Carol and Rebecca here, too.
Good evening. Pardon my back. Sorry. I'm not, I am not texting. My speech is here somewhere. Well, I am honored to be here to be principal of these lovely two ladies, and we will be sad to miss them, but happy to, you know, see you go and start your next phase of life. First, I'm going to just talk a little bit about Carol Rossmann. Carol has worked many years as an instructional aide in the special ed department at Judd. She has supported many students over the years by providing high-quality special education services to students at their least restrictive environment. Carol has been a dedicated professional. She, yeah, I went to recently because she had to, really was never out, very dependable. Carol was there every day. So she serviced her students in kindergarten, I believe we began in LLD years ago, not years ago, but years ago. And, you know, the students and family and staff that have worked with Carol are grateful for her support over the years, and we will truly miss you, but we wish you the best. I should have brought paper. Okay, Rebecca, so Rebecca Zenikas. Rebecca has worked the duration of her career as a speech-language therapist at Judd Elementary. Over the years, Rebecca helped countless students, not only with their speech production and language development, but also in their development as meaningful members of our school community. Rebecca has been an active member, not only at Judd School, but of the special education department, often taking leadership role to newer speech therapists over the years. Rebecca implemented a change in service delivery for students with articulation needs that has been adopted throughout the district with great success. Rebecca's collaboration with the teachers she worked with is notable, as she often volunteered to expand their knowledge base of our staff in the area of speech-language in order to best support our students. Many of the students that Rebecca has worked with over the years have successfully completed their speech-language therapy and moved on without the need for further service, a testament to the quality of service she delivered. Her presence at Judd and in the special ed department will be greatly missed. We will miss you, and we wish you well.
This time, we'd like to call up Mr. Sid Dawson, principal of Livingston Park, our retiree, our plant manager, Eddie Jakunski.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our retirees. I have had the pleasure tonight of celebrating the career of a great person, a really versatile guy, someone I'm proud not only to call a colleague but a friend, Mr. Eddie Jakunski. Eddie's been with the district for over thirty-five years. He's been in several different buildings, a variety of roles. Now, when I first started as a high school teacher, I had to work with Eddie, who at that point was part of the grounds crew. He's been a big part of John Adams School, and the past few years has been our plant manager at Livingston Park. And as a plant manager, you have to be really versatile. We've got about five hundred kids, a hundred staff members or so, we have one plant manager. And Eddie works alone during his shift. Anything that happens with the building, HVAC, with the heat, with making sure the school can operate, Eddie finds a way to make it happen. He's reliable, he's consistent, and he does a great job at what he does. But there's two things that I will always remember about Eddie and the joy I've had of working with him in my time in the district. First is, he's all about the kids. If a child needs something, he will find a way to make it happen. If there's an obstacle in front of him that prevents the child from getting what they need, he'll find a solution, and he'll make it work. He is masterful with children, and sometimes we don't think about someone in a plant role or a custodial role or a maintenance role, and how important it is that they can relate to kids. Eddie's wonderful with the kids. The kids look up to him, they fist bump him in the hallway, and we ask kids, who do they connect with in the building? There's always a few that mention Eddie, and that's pretty special. The amount of kids that he's worked with at the high school, particularly our students who have special needs, I find ways to involve them, provide them with career training, connect them with opportunities, embrace them, work with them, is really special. And Eddie's going to be leaving us, he's got a wonderful retirement ahead with his daughter, Skylar, his wife, Nicole, but he's one of the people who's really built a legacy for what our district values in terms of how we work together, how we collaborate, and what we can look forward to. The other thing I'll really miss about Eddie is his sense of humor in what can be a stressful role. Eddie always finds a way to get it done, and then when it's all finished and whatever the concern is has been resolved, we always find a way to share a laugh about it. And we'll miss that tremendously, but we're so excited for you. Congratulations, Eddie.
I just want to thank everybody for everything, and thirty-six years of great friends and great relationships. Thank you.
From Parsons, we have our principal, Mrs. Diane O'Whalen. We also have Betty and Phyllis here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all of our retirees, and something that's really touched me deeply as I see the presentations up here and the number of years that people served in North Brunswick, it truly is a testament to our district for how long people stay around in this district. And, you know, it truly is a work that we all do together, both with central office administration, our Board of Education, our parents, our students, and our families. It's a wonderful place to work, a wonderful place to live, and I think four hundred and something years, close to five hundred, is a true testament to that. So congratulations to all of you. So tonight, I have the pleasure of honoring two of our staff members. Today's a bittersweet moment as we gather to celebrate the retirement of someone who has dedicated over three decades of their life to shaping the musical talents and enriching the lives of countless students. It's my honor to pay tribute to our instrumental music teacher, Mrs. Phyllis Bonaduce. For thirty-one years, Phyllis has been a beacon of inspiration and creativity in our school. What sets her apart is her remarkable ability to nurture musical talent in students of all backgrounds and abilities. Many who walked into her classroom with little to no musical experience, many of you probably had children play the viola the first time, they brought it home, it sounded like nails scratching on the wall, but she took that, and they emerged as talented musicians under her guidance. Phyllis truly has a gift for unlocking the potential within each and every student, instilling in them a love for music that will last a lifetime. One of Phyllis's greatest strengths is her flexibility. In a world of ever-changing academic schedules and demands, she has remained steadfast in her commitment to providing quality music education to our students. She's adapted her teaching methods and curriculum to meet the needs of every student, ensuring that each child has the opportunity to excel in the arts. that each child has the opportunity to excel in the arts. Year after year, Phyllis has tirelessly planned and executed wonderful concerts that have brought joy and pride to our school community. These concerts have not only showcased the incredible talent of our students, but have also provided an opportunity for family and friends to come together and celebrate the power of music. Phyllis, your impact on our school cannot be overstated. You have not only taught notes and rhythms, but have instilled in our students the values of discipline, perseverance, and creativity. Your dedication to your craft and unwavering belief in the potential of every single student have left an indelible mark on our school community. As you embark on this new chapter of your life in retirement, know that your legacy will live on in the countless lives you've touched. On behalf of the entire school community, I want to express our deepest gratitude for your 31 years of service, your passion for music, and unwavering commitment to our students. May your retirement be filled with music, laughter, and all the happiness you so richly deserve.
Okay, we also gathered today to honor someone truly special in our school community. For over 15 years, Mrs. Betty Ball has been an integral part of our team, dedicating her time and energy to ensuring the well-being and happiness of our students during lunch and recess. Betty has exemplified what it means to go above and beyond in her role. In addition to being elected playground dean, Betty has been a cornerstone of support for our students, staff, and parents alike. Whether it's ensuring that the cafeteria runs smoothly with utensils and items readily available, like the true cafeteria queen that she is, or going the extra mile to create engaging activities for indoor recess, she always put the needs of our students first. One of Betty's greatest qualities is her dependability and her flexibility. Rain or shine, she was there for our students, ready to adapt to any situation with a smile on her face. Her presence has brought a sense of comfort and security to our school community, knowing that she's always there to lend a helping hand. Betty, your dedication and commitment to our school have not gone unnoticed. You have touched the lives of countless students over the years and left a lasting impact that will be remembered for years to come. As you embark on this new chapter in your life in retirement, know that you will be dearly missed, but your legacy will live on on the hearts of all those that you've touched so deeply. On behalf of our entire school community at Parsons, I want to extend our deepest gratitude for your 15-plus years of service, for unwavering dedication, and your infectious positivity. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, and all the happiness you so richly deserve. I'd like to call up our principal of Linwood, Mr. J.D. Shorter, and our honoring who's here tonight, Ed Kowalski, our assistant principal.
Good evening, everyone, and good to see you all again. And congratulations to all the retirees. It's just good to see people being that long and just doing their own job all to begin. So I am here to talk about my friend and colleague, Mr. Ed Kowalski. Again, I am also not texting, I'm reading. So let's begin. So congratulations on your retirement, and I wish you success in whatever life brings you, which I'm sure will include boating, fishing, biking, hanging out with your wife, and hanging out with Goliath, who's his dog. Your career at Linwood has been phenomenal from start to finish. Started as a shop teacher 36 years ago in 10 months, which is just an amazing number, moving to dean of students, and then onto assistant principal. You've been the cornerstone at Linwood School for the past 36 years. Your hard work, dedication to our Linwood staff, and to our students has been stellar. Your amazing ability to see things and create multiple schedules, whether it be COVID, whether it be changing of classes, again, you just have been phenomenal. And again, your ability just to be the person who I can go to for everything has really, really helped me tremendously. The three things that I am going to miss about you personally, Mr. Kowalski, is your hilarious sense of humor. I can tell you at least 100 times where we have been at a meeting and it's been very serious and everyone's stressed out, but Mr. K will come up with something that is just hilarious. Again, the laughter is just awesome, and again, I would truly miss that about you. Also, and you wouldn't know it, but Ed's knowledge of music. So Ed's knowledge of old-school rap, to hard rock, to smooth reggae, like he brought some things up that I had and said, you know what, I do remember that lyric. It's just been amazing, and something that we have really enjoyed also. And the last thing that I'll say that I would truly miss is just, he is someone that I can go to and think. I know that several times you remember I would come to your office and say, Mr. K, I did not know what I'm going to do. This person, these things, this situation, and you've always been there to give me sound advice, and I truly, truly, truly appreciate you. And I tell you that Linwood Middle School, who was past, now Linwood School, we will truly miss you. We really, really appreciate all of the things that you have done for us. Thank you.
So I have had the privilege of working in the same district my entire career and also working in the same school my entire career. In fact, the other day when I was pulling in the driveway, I was walking into the building and I was thinking to myself, how many times have I walked in and out of this building in the past 36-plus years? And I did a rough calculation and it comes to about 15,000 times. So that is not what I'm most proud of. And at the same time, I am so thankful for all the time that I've had here as an industry arts teacher. I was an industry arts teacher for about 18 years, and then I had the privilege of being a school administrator for the remainder of my career. I think as I look back, that I've learned just as much as I think I've given to a lot of the students. And I really enjoyed my time here. It's really something special to really spend your entire career in one building. So, and I am grateful for all the people that I've worked with who have helped me along the way throughout my career. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Chakunsky is the instructional dean.
Yeah, I'm not just getting anything.
She's the house center together. We actually do not have anybody from the middle school retiring. So we will say unfortunately Cheryl Letman could not be here tonight from the high school, but again, science teacher for over 20 years in the district, and we applaud her as well. We do have two district employees who are retiring. I'd like to call Doug Dehaven and Frances Ryan. We have Mr. Carol, we have Mrs. Hock, our business administrator.
I'm Paul Carroll, I'm the supervisor for building and grounds. Doug Dehaven's been with us for 32 years in the district. The man's been on our roofs back in his younger days, not recently, but he's done everything from working on our roofs, all of our doors, our floors, he's crawled in the spaces under this building. We're going to miss him, he's got expertise that we are going to have to fill his shoes. And I say we do have a good team, it does mentor the team we have now, and we're just going to have to fill those shoes as best we can. It's been a great time.
I'd like to say something, Carol. Here you go.
I'd just like to say, thank you very much for letting me have the privilege of working here for North Brunswick Board of Ed. I love my job, I love you people. These people, the maintenance crew, keep still, which I'm doing, I think you're gonna be alright. I love my boss, both bosses. Paul, I comb my hair the same way. To be, I don't think, this is probably the first time anybody's seen the way I comb my hair. I just want to thank you very much. I'm really sorry that I'm this old that I cannot get the service I like to get for the school district. I love my job, I love you people, and I just want to thank you very much.
So our supervisor of transportation is not able to be here today, so I actually have the privilege to introduce to you Frances Ryan. So many times when you're driving throughout our town, you see some of our smaller buses that say North Brunswick on it, they carry our most precious asset, which is our children. And we are so fortunate to have a group of drivers and aides that make sure that our children get to school safe, on time, and prepared to start to learn. And we've had the privilege of having Frances with us for over 15 years. Now, he retired at the end of December and he quickly took off to start on his retirement and he started to travel. But it is employees like Frances that really make our schools tick and bring our students ready to learn with all the teachers and all the great stories that we heard from our instructional people, our teachers and our aides. So Frances, you have been missed because you've been gone four or five months now, but we thank you for your service, for the time you gave to our children and your dedication to North Brunswick Board of Education. So continue enjoying your retirement and of course, your travel.
I want to say thank you to everybody for many years, 15 years of happy memories people got to know. I can only say, back in the boards down at the work of the transportation offices now, I got to know Dr. Z on a busy and forcedly in basis. How many people can say in the days where if you work in the company that you actually got to know the CEO of the company and your recognition for being a forcedly, that is a definite impression of me, and I am grateful for that. Thank you.
And thank you to all of our retirees who were able to make it tonight and our administrative team who is also here and family and friends and guests. We do have a pack for each of you, but due to some shipping issues, it won't be here. Shortly, we will get those to you promptly to apologize. But again, congratulations to all of you, you know, wishing you just the best of luck and much happiness in this new chapter of your life that you have either started to take on or will be very shortly. Again, for someone who grew up here in this district, maybe not 36 years, Ed, but my whole career has been here as well as most of you, and again, just a testament again of the great community that we have built here in North Brunswick. All of these years of service and that careers are built here and our staff are truly appreciated as our parents, students, and our board. So thank you again very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Keita, that was terrific, and thank you all retirees. Your years of service is just amazing to see and your dedication to our students and our community is truly a thing of wonder in the world today. You don't see that kind of dedication of people committing and staying in a place for so long. So that means so much to this community and to our students, so thank you. Board members? Anybody?
Well, thank you all. I greatly appreciate everyone being here and learning many of your stories, especially I recognize some of the faces at John Adams where I actually went to school. So I greatly appreciate all of you, especially, you know, serving our kids for, you know, combined over 430 years. I mean, it's wonderful to see. You will all be greatly missed and we're very lucky to have had all of you.
I just wanted to second those sentiments. A personal, I guess I'm going to divulge a personal anecdote of mine. I try and live my life in a way that by the end of my life, my hope is that I would have exhausted all the talents that I feel like the higher power has given me. And I think that all of us kind of have that same desire to make sure that we use our talents well and we serve well. And hearing the diversity of different experiences from you all, serving as instructional aides, playground aides, you know, lunchroom aides, or teachers, or bus drivers, plant managers, you all have brought your skills to bear for the students of North Brunswick, for the community, and I am extremely grateful because you all make our world turn, right? It's very important and I just want to say a job well done. Thank you for your service and we hope to continue the good work in your absence and enjoy your retirement.
All right, thank you. Thank you all, we'll continue with our regular meeting. At this time, we will move to item number six. Mr. Legori, would you please take item six?
Sure, Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the following board minutes, the regular public meeting minutes of April 24th, 2024, and the executive minutes of April 24th, 2024.
Second.
I'm in favor. All right, if anyone wants to post, the minutes are accepted.
Thank you. Any communications this evening?
No communications.
All right, any old business or new business?
Not today.
All right, so we will move to your administrative report, Mrs. Choka.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to all our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. Our school district recently participated in the Spring 2024 replenish program, a Middlesex County program where each school collects non-perishable food items to help feed the community. In a time where feudal insecurity is a real issue, as we heard tonight already, these donations helped to assist our community members struggling to meet their basic needs. I'm proud to say that as a combined school district, we were able to collect over 2,650 pounds of food for the local food bank. Schools will close early this Friday as we start Memorial Day weekend, and we will be closed Monday as well. On Election Day, Tuesday, June 4th, we will have an early closing for students, students only, due to the elections in the buildings. Messaging will be sent out shortly to parents so they can begin to plan ahead. This is our last full board meeting prior to the last day of school on June 19th. Please continue to watch the website in Parent Square for end-of-year notifications on events and important announcements. I would also like to acknowledge our new Linwood dean, who was on the, who has already been actually approved last month, Abby Cohn, as well as our new John Adams director for next year, replacing Miss Stern, Ms. Carly Cummings. So if they'd like to stand up, if either one of them would like to come say something after I. So this is Ms. Cummings. She was approved last month. You can pick it up. It won't bite.
Okay, I'm also not texting. Good evening, I wanted to take this opportunity to formally thank you for approving my appointment to the position of Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction. I think that's the right title, it's a whole lot longer than instructional dean. North Brunswick has been my home for my entire teaching career and John Adams is the only place I have worked, so maybe I'm on track for 15,000 times in and out of the building. I began as a bright-eyed 23-year-old. I began as a bright-eyed, twenty-three-year-old college graduate, and here I am, twenty-one years later, landing in a role that has been my goal to take on. I'm so incredibly proud to work here. The ways that we support our students and how we work to help them to be as successful as possible is what keeps me here. We do such amazing work here, and I'm excited to continue to be a resource for our students, staff, and families. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. Ms. Cohn, would you like to say something?
Good evening. I am grateful for this opportunity to be moving from the middle school back to Linwood to work where my career here began. I'm not from North Brunswick, but I call this home. And I am hopefully going to be standing up here in thirty years, accepting your time. From you all, well, you might not be here on, carry on. I'm very excited to come back to Linwood where I started. And I do want to give just a little note about Mr. Kowalski, who's here. He played, he has played a major role in my journey into becoming an administrator, and I'm grateful for him. I'm gonna miss him because, you know, his career is ending and mine's just beginning. But I hope that I will do him proud by serving the school as he has for the past thirty-six-plus, almost, years. So thank you all, and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cohn. And that is it for my administrative report this evening.
Thank you. Congratulations to you both. We look forward to seeing you in your new roles. We'll move to the student reports. Hello, ladies.
Hello. How are you?
Hello.
So first off, on April twenty-sixth, our MBTHS, Painted Words, hosted a successful coffeehouse event where students were able to showcase their various talents.
On May third, our Latin American Club held Somos Unus event. Members of the club were able to highlight the Hispanic culture through dancing, music, and fashion.
And on May tenth, the Class of 2027 hosted a movie night fundraiser in the Commons. It was well-attended.
On May tenth, no, on May eleventh, our South American Asian Culture Association hosted their annual innovations event. Students performed a Bollywood-inspired skit with dances choreographed by fellow classmates.
And just last Friday, May seventeenth, the Class of 2025 held the Junior Prom at the Pine Manor. Over two hundred students attended the Great Gatsby-themed event by their class officers and class advisors.
This afternoon, where I was, there was, Class of 2024 kicked off their senior end-of-the-year activities with the senior barbecue. Students were able to enjoy games, food, and ice cream. While listening to students play music, they were called boys in the band. Back.
And then lastly, we have recently held our elections for SGO and class officers for next year. New members of Executive Board have been chosen and will meet next week for the annual leadership training conference and begin planning events for next year. Thank you, that's all.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, we'll move to our committee reports. We'll start with Human Resources. Mr. Brockman?
Yes, Madam President. The Human Resources Committee, Human Resources Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, May fifteenth, to discuss various personnel and community topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are either resigning, retiring, the board thanks them for their service and wishes them well, and will be honoring them at tonight's meeting. As of last Wednesday, vacancies for the 2024-25 school year were posted and include positions at the elementary, middle, high school, and preschool levels for which alternate route and traditional route teachers, candidates are encouraged to apply. Several support positions in transportation were also posted. The district also continues to seek out candidates for several bilingual teacher positions at the elementary level. Ms. Keita shared a detailed spreadsheet with the committee on the status of all the open positions for the 24-25 school year, and most candidates are either on tonight's agenda for approval or in the final interviewing stages. Our administrative team recently participated in two job fairs sponsored by New Jersey School Jobs and continue to encourage any new or current educator interested in joining our team to view our job openings on our website and social media pages. Our new staff recruitment video can also be viewed on these sites. There are several reassignments for this year and next year, and we thank our staff for taking on these new roles. Our Human Resources Department continues to actively recruit for substitutes, and several new ones are listed on the agenda, and we welcome them to the district. We also reviewed the need to expand to two additional gifted and talented teachers at the elementary level, as well as a math instructional coach for grades five through eight. These positions will be budget-neutral. We also discussed any upcoming leaves of absences for the remainder of the school year and for the next school year, and how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term subs, or six-periods teaching stipendments. The committee reviewed the North Brunswick Township Spectator Code of Conduct guidance, and the districts, the districts are anticipating an upcoming review of the new policy related to Spectator Code of Conduct before the start of the new school year. Lastly, the committee had a first reading of the civility policy. Thank you.
Thank you. The Education Committee, Vice President James will be filling in for Dr. Patel this evening.
Yes, I am. The Education Committee met on May fifteenth, Wednesday, May fifteenth, and we went over, well, our first order of business is that we had a presentation by a committee that was established to develop an application for the Teacher Climate and Culture Grant. It's an innovative grant that Governor Murphy's task force on the teacher shortage decided that there were some needs to look at the teacher shortage, and they proposed ways to reduce administrative burden. And so we had some staff that was gracious enough to put together a proposal for that grant application. And so the key aspect is collaboration between the board and local, and the association, who were members of the task force. That presentation is still being dispensed amongst the board for consideration about the application process, and that will be under review in the near future to determine if we are going to proceed with that grant and what the inner workings of that might look like. We also went over some other events. Ice cream for literacy nights would happen at JA, Judd, LP, and Parsons. There was an update on our gifted and talented program, which is our Seeing Our Achievements Riasur program for K-5. We talked about updating our K-5 Standards-Based Report Card, and that is currently underway. We discussed a proposal for a math coach kindergarten night for, kindergarten parent night on May thirtieth at the middle school. And also, as it relates to assessments and grants, we received updates from Ms. Chang, who reported on the GPA schedule considerations for the 24-25 school year. That's the NJGPA testing, and we are looking at the testing schedule as it currently exists and determining if there are any possible alterations that could best suit our needs going forward. The Accuplacer testing is completed, as is NJSLA and DLM, and we received an update about the portfolio appeals process for 2024. We did have a first reading on Policy 5440, which was honoring student achievement. And we did finalize the version two of our calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, twenty-five, twenty-sixth calendar, and that is now finalized and complete. And as Superintendent Chirica noted, for June fourth, we have early dismissal for Election Day for our students. And that concludes the Education Committee report.
Thank you. I appreciate you filling in. Business operations will be given tonight by Mr. Wen.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, the Business Operations Committee met on May fifteenth as well. We discussed that the three-to-five-year facility study report is nearly complete and is planned to be reported in June. We also reviewed some preliminary data for the demographic study, which indicated that our enrollment seems to be stable. However, it is unknown if charter school or any influx of families with school-aged childrens may affect this. We also discussed the following items that pertain to the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 budget, all of which will be motioned tonight. Firstly, new visitor management system not to exceed forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, which you can see in Finance Item 4M. There's also the purchase of new security cameras for our elementary schools in Maplemead, not to exceed two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-three. Finance Item 4L. We also discussed the awarding of the lawn-cutting services, Finance Item 4J. We are renewing the agreement with Remedy Analytics for one year to help the district with reducing our healthcare costs through appropriate rebates. This is Finance Item 4K. We also discussed the renewing of the Chartwell's contract, Finance Items 4B and C. The most important piece of this is that we will be able to keep the meal prices the same for our students and families. We also discussed items pertaining to our current FY 2023 and 24. The replacement of Linwood Kitchen Refrigerator, not to exceed forty-eight hundred, about forty-eight hundred dollars, paid through the Food Enterprise Fund. This is Finance Item 3D. We did discuss a very urgent need for the high school auditorium lighting system, which needs to be replaced with a cost not to exceed six hundred eighty-four, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. This includes a dimmer and control rack and house light replacements. Also includes a required New Jersey Code compliant emergency lighting egress package. This work is planned to be for the end of June. Fortunately, we can utilize monies in the capital fund as the upgrades to the lighting system have been in our previous DOE capital plan. We will be utilizing a vendor from the co-op. They had previously worked on the stage light replacements, and this is Finance Item 3B. We also discussed our transportation renewals that can be found in Transportation Items 2A and a resolution for participation in coordinated transportation through the ESC NJ. We briefly discussed the status updates on a number of existing work, including the Linwood Roof. The major work is completed, and we're just working on finding some sources of leaks. The forensic envelope assessment, which has helped to identify some issues where water is not going through the weep holes properly. We also talked about the Rod Grant submission of the Design Consultant Form and Checklist, just a number of things that still has to happen. And in the high school, we talked about the pool work to tentatively start on August twenty-sixth. And just as the other committee did, we discussed the twenty-five, twenty-sixth calendar. And the most notable change for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth calendar will be that the spring break dates, which will be more in line with some of the districts surrounding North Brunswick. And that concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you for filling in, appreciate it. Negotiations, Ms. Keith?
Yes, Madam President. The negotiations team met with our teachers' union on May thirteenth regarding our continued negotiations, and today we met with our administrators regarding our partnership and collaboration. I would like to thank Mr. Dawson, Ms. Whalen, and Mr. Feltry for their partnership and their continued collaboration.
Thank you. I'd also like to personally congratulate Mr. Ali and Mr. Legori for receiving board member recognitions at the Middlesex County meeting we had earlier in May. So congratulations to you both. Mr. Ali received the, I believe, new member certification, and then Mr. Legori received Certified Board Leader, which is, I think, the highest recognition you can get. So congratulations to you both. Anything from our liaisons? Mr. Carter, who works with our township council and mayor?
Sure, the next Township Council meeting will be May twenty-eighth at 7:00 PM. Also, there'll be a community meeting on May thirtieth with the mayor of the governing body and the township directors at Maplemead at 7:00 PM as well.
Excellent, thank you. And Mr. Ali, who is our liaison for New Jersey School Boards, as well as Middlesex County School Boards.
Thank you, Madam President. So last week, we had our NJSBA General Assembly, Assembly, which is essentially the governing body of New Jersey School Board Association. So we discussed a lot of legislative topics that are going to be on the ballot for our second legislative meeting in the fall. The main three are the main ones that I think may impact our district, just to let you all know. So we're going to be talking about waivers for some pre-K. We're looking to re-envision charter schools, and we're looking to start talking about caps on shared services. So looking at, like, when we have extra or when we need different services around, like, school psychologists or just anything, they're trying to think about a cap because inflation, you know, when these caps happen, it allows our school district to have more funds and just to do more. So when we have these caps, it's going to allow the state to regulate how high these people can charge us, and charge the district, and charge, you know, the lovely taxpayers. And then, secondly, well, lastly, the biggest thing that we spoke about in my perspective was thinking about changing up how we conceptualize voting in school places. So right now, as you heard, Ms. Chirica said, that we're going to have a shorter day on Voting Day because of that. So I was looking at ways to look at different voting places around town to help us have more time in the school with the kids, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you. We all have a lot going on, so I appreciate everyone's collaboration throughout the last month. At this time, we'll move to item number nine. Mr. Wen, could you please take item nine?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All the reports are accepted.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll review our agenda for this evening. The board has received a copy prior to tonight's meeting. Anything new will be in bold, so at this time, we will review our agenda, and we'll go through it pretty quickly as we've all received it. So pages three and four, five and six, pages seven and eight, nine and ten, eleven and twelve, thirteen and fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, pages seventeen and eighteen, nineteen and twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and taking us to our last page of thirty-five. Thank you. So at this time, we will have a public session on agenda items only. If anyone would like to come to the podium and speak to agenda items, we ask that you please come and state your name, sign in, and you'll be given three minutes. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Does anyone oppose? This public session is closed.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, can you please take item thirteen?
Yes, Madam President.
On consent agenda? Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, one and two. Curriculum, one and two. Miscellaneous, finance items, one through four. Policy and transportation, one and two.
Second.
I'm gonna take roll call. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions and resolutions are...
Thank you. At this time, we'll flip to page thirty-five, where we will have a public session on any matter at this time. At this time, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak on any matter, we ask that you please state your name, sign in, and you'll be given three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Some of you know me, for the ones that do not know me, my name is Katie Stokes. I have a seventh grader here in the district. And I have two points that I would like to discuss. An incident involving my daughter, Alana Stokes, who was a seventh grader at the middle school, occurred on 5/13/24. My daughter was brutally attacked by another student, Alina Queno. My daughter was brutally attacked by another student, Elena Queno. This entire incident could have been avoided had staff and administration handled the situation properly by, number one, removing Elena from the class, being that she continued to cause a disruption within the classroom that prevented the students from learning.
I'm sorry, Ms. Stokes. I just want to make sure that we don't mention any other students' names. Okay, so if you want to refer them by initials, can you just do so?
Is it okay if I mention my daughter's name?
Yes, yes.
Okay, no problem. I am puzzled as to why there was a lack of intervention from the classroom teacher when faced with a disruptive behavior that ultimately led to a disturbing altercation involving my daughter. The failure to address the student's disruptive behavior promptly and decisively, despite numerous opportunities to do so, is deeply concerning. This failure allowed the situation to escalate to a point where my daughter felt threatened and intimidated, culminating into a physical assault. It is quite evident that there are significant issues pertaining to accountability on the administrative front, and that my daughter was made to suffer due to the lack of control by administration. I am even further perplexed by the absence of appropriate measures to control the situation by other faculty members and security personnel. The failure to disperse a large gathering of students and prevent an assault on my daughter is distressing and raises serious questions and concerns about the safety protocols in place within the school premises. The leniency of the disciplinary action taken against the perpetrator in the form of a mere three-day suspension is woefully inadequate considering the severity of the incident and the trauma inflicted upon my daughter. I am demanding a comprehensive explanation of what safety measures and protocols will be taken to address the systemic issues that have contributed to this distressing situation. Additionally, please advise on the appropriate measures that will be implemented to ensure the safety and well-being of my daughter, as well as other students within the district. And my second issue...
Your three minutes are up.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Stokes, thank you for coming, and I certainly understand when something like this happens to your child, how disturbing that is. We are more than happy to speak with you from the administrative level, and what we do ask, though, is that you follow the chain of command. So I don't know if you've met with Mr.?
I have. I followed the chain of command. I felt that it needed to be made a public issue.
Okay.
Because I'm not getting the proper response that I should be rescinding regarding this matter.
So I will follow up with Mr. Solover and find out where things stand with that, and then we will follow up with you tomorrow as well. Okay?
Okay. Are you certain that you will follow up with me? Because I've had an issue in the past, where I came here, nobody has followed up with me. So I just want to make sure you will follow up with me.
We can assure you someone will follow up with you tomorrow. We will follow up with you. Would anyone else like to address the board? All right. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
At this time, we'll move to go into closed session, where a section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist. Now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the specified subject matters to be discussed is as followed: Personnel Matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can someone please move to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
At this time, we'll move to go into closed session, where a section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from